My name is Joel Arroyo. I'm a veteran, patriot, taxpayer, and public servant. Everything I will be talking about is factual and can be proven through open records requests. I would like to take time to talk about three things that are a major concern to my neighbors and I. The three topics are safety, transparency, and accountability. Some of you know I was once a very proud sheriff's deputy in Wilson County. I was forced to leave Wilson County Sheriff's Office due to unbearable working conditions set forth by the Chief Administrator, Clint Garza, and other administrative staff. This does not include Mr. Stewart, who always treated me with dignity and respect. I bring this up because when the new administration took over the sheriff's office, there was an understanding there was going to be a change in terms of efficiency and crime reduction. Wilson County Sheriff's Office was fully staffed with over 20 patrol deputies and fully-staffed supervision to include corporals and sergeants. I quickly saw the number of deputies cut in half in less than a week, which means fully-staffed patrol operations and coverage was cut in half. This means instead of having six to eight deputies patrolling on rotation, down to four or five deputies patrolling 990-plus square miles night and day. Yet we and other deputies continue to press on and take call after call. Luckily during this time, you would have two to three deputies responding to a dangerous call such as family violence or physical disturbances. Towards my last two months as patrol deputy in June of 2022, for physical disturbances which are everything from fights to domestic violence, myself and one other deputy would respond. This number is important and will be mentioned later. Safety. Yes, I agree some deputies are not fit for the job as sheriff deputy or supervisor in Wilson County. But those men and women, some with dozens of years of experience, had irreplaceable knowledge of our area. Over a short year went by and the ratio of patrol deputies on night shift went from four deputies and one sergeant to most nights of one to two deputies and one sergeant, or sometimes just a deputy and one sergeant. That's two people patrolling our entire county. And that's 990-plus square miles plus taking calls for service. I've been informed with firsthand knowledge that right now, our county is mostly being patrolled at night with just two deputies. This is a major safety concern caused directly by the work environment caused by Chief Clint Garza created. The same day I turned in my two weeks' letter of resignation, I was at Willed, which means, and I quote, "can be let go for anything."
You need to wrap it up, sir, please. You need to wrap it up, your time is up.
Okay. A total of five deputies about a month time period resigned from Wilson County Sheriff's Office, two being sergeants. Okay. Unfortunately, I can't go into transparency, which goes into details on the budget of 2020 and 2023. Okay, despite this extreme lack of manpower, Chief Administrator Clint Garza should be fully dedicated to solving the staffing issue and making proper working environment conditions. But he put his efforts into a political hack. He is too busy preparing for a run for sheriff by focusing his efforts into the POTH ISD Board and currently serving as a POTH ISD Board President. Chief Garza was quick to sit down with the Wilson County News, showing off taxpayer-funded equipment and vehicles, but I have not seen when he's been asked about the high turnover rate of patrol deputies and jailers and long response times for calls for service. And unfortunately, I can't go into great detail on the other things because my time is almost up. But a quick subpoena or internal investigation with Human Resources will prove what I'm saying to be factual. Deputies were wiretapped with audio and video devices by the administration in patrol rooms that were used to conduct official business. This is also true. I'm ashamed to admit deputies, including myself, were coerced and convinced to write documents to get deputies in trouble. I'm going to skip this because I'm running out of time, unfortunately. And I'll end with, I just want to thank you for your time and consideration into this matter. Thank you and God bless.
Ms. Jordan, she's from Congresswoman Monica Del Cruz's office.
Good morning. I actually, I live in Kearns County right down the road here, but I am working for Monica Del Cruz as her field director in the northern heart of the district. We've split the district between north and south, so I've got Wilson County, Guadalupi, Kearns, and Lightfoot. So I wanted to let people know that we are here. We are here to serve as constituents. We have an office in Saginaw, and then I would be spending one day a month in Forestville, one day a month in George West, and one day a month in Kearns County, and more if necessary. We will be at the Ag Life Building down the street here in Classroom 10. We're still trying to determine the date. I'm trying to coordinate with your Commissioner Court meeting so that I can be here for some of these. So we will let you know when that's going to be. We handle things like constituent services, if constituents are having issues with social security, internal revenue, VA benefits, really big on the VA side, passport issues, immigration issues. We would be available to write letters of recommendation for students that may want to go to military academies, so we'll reach out to all the schools. We've actually got an art competition coming up, and I've reached out to all the high schools to let them know about that. Every year, Congress has an art competition, and one piece will be selected from our district that will be displayed in the halls of Congress for a year. So just different things like that. I wanted to just make people aware of our presence. We're here to help out however we can, so spread the word. If anybody wants a card that I haven't given one to already, just check with me after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. You with the public comments? All right, next item on the agenda, certificates and conclusions and awards. The first one is mine from BG Young Institute of County Government for the 16 Hours of Continuing Education. And the second one is from the County Judges of the Commissioner's Association of Texas that indicates that I completed my required training last year. Then from the Elections Office, we have Rose Lopas, Oka Marrero, and Sarah Pettis that completed Elections Cyber Security Academy Cohort 1. And from the County Clerks Office, we have Genevieve Martinez, Gail Ritchie, Crystal Bedalco, Maria Spoon, Georgina Vera, and Loretta Rodriguez completed the birth registrar Next item is the Extension Activity Reports.
I got those. Go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the record, Commissioner King arrived at 9:10 p.m.
AM, Judge.
Was that AM? Oh, AM, yes, AM.
And if there's any questions?
Anything you want to tell specifically about?
We're just staying busy, so.
So I understand we've got some kids doing really well on the livestock shows?
Yes, yes.
So how many grand champions do we have in San Antonio or?
That's a good question.
Okay. I know we kind of have three.
Allison and I are comprising a whole spreadsheet. We're hanging on by the thread right now, so.
All right, well, congratulations. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, next item is number six. Update on the completion of two library grants. A is the Texas State Library and Archives Commission, the Digital Navigation Grant, and item B is Texas Book Festival, the grant on diversification of library collection. Ms. Ford.
Yes. Well, thank you guys for letting me come today. It dawned on me that with the new court that you guys might like to know what's going on at your library. So the first one, if we can pull one more, we applied for the Texas State Library called the Digital Navigation Grant. So it's funded by the State Library and the Archives Commission. It was part of the American Recovery Act. It came to us really late. We were awarded in November, but we didn't get the actual signed contract till April. So we actually had a degree librarian that would work with us from April, and then she left us in October. So when we wrote the grant, we had two goals in mind. One was to find the people in Wilson County who needed broadband. The second part of it was to actually hire someone. Earlier this week, I sent out a fact sheet for everybody, and if you'll notice where it goes, like I'm in the corner, where it's accreditation, the criteria for accreditation, our library is short one degree person. Since the state says we have a service population of 51,000, even though the census says we have 48,000, we have to have two MLF-degree people on staff, and I cannot be counted. So right now, we've been sliding under the wire because the way that they're annual report list, they just ask how many degree people you have on staff, so I missed myself.
I'm sorry, can I ask, I know this was brought up last year at the time Judge Jackson had asked as well, where is it, how is the state getting the population when by census we're at 49,000?
I guess, I talked to them several times because I knew Judge Jackson even offered to talk to anybody if the state library signed anything, to let them know that we were under that 50,000 threshold. And they said it's the outside people that come to use their library. So even though the population for our county is at 48, they assumed that those extra people come in and use our libraries. So that's why they gave me the number of 51,000. So this is why I was really hot to try to take after this grant, because they were actually going to pay for library staff and people with degrees. So what we did with the first goal is, and you can see the picture behind me, we created connectivity kits. So it had a backpack, a Chromebook, a wired mouse, and a hotspot. Then the grant paid for the monthly hotspot payments. AT&amp;T gave us 11 hotspots free to charge. We just had to pay the monthly payments. So before we could even apply for this, they made me jump through hoops for training, and I went through something called the Edge Assessment Tool. It's put out by the Urban Libraries Council, and it's basically a benchmark to see how your size of library matches up to other libraries. The only place we were short on is that we do not supply software for people to create videos, to create podcasts. We just don't have the money to do that. And if you'd like to see the report, I can email it to you, but it's several pages long. So one of the other things we did is there should be a little yellow sticky on your paper. We created that so we could see how we could help people. So when you first walk in and you tell me, "I need help with my phone, I need to print from my phone," so the staff judges how well you know what you need to get done. Then the next question is, did we accomplish the task for them? And then the third question on this sticky is, if that person were to leave, are they confident in doing the task themselves? So this pie chart that we have shows you when people begin, I'm sorry, I have my glasses off, I can't see. Number one, I think is the, is it the green?
The green, yes.
The green.
None low.
So that's how much the people don't know when they come into the library. So if you go to the next one for me, this is how much the people know when they leave. So the green now is down to 7%, and five is up to?
33%.
33% of the people who walk out the door can accomplish this task. So this is how well your library staff is helping residents in Wilson County. So what's changed? Well, we realized that people in Wilson County don't want laptops, they want the hotspot. So we broke all the kits apart, and it's now a shopping cart. When you come in and tell me you need assistance, we'll ask you, "Do you need a laptop?" "No." "Do you need a wired mouse?" "No." "Do you want the hotspot?" So that all goes into, and you can check this out for two weeks. We're also learning that we have untapped expertise from the staff. I have an iPhone, my assistant has an Android. So if I can't help you and you have an Android, someone else in the library can help you get what you need. Okay, so we tried to work with the librarian, but she left us early. We were also able to hire three high school interns, two of them were on their way to college, and they left us early. So going forward, we're going to try again, but still looking for another grant to help us hire people. The next grant that we're closed out, and I'm happy to say we did really good, is the Texas Book Festival. Does everybody know what the Texas Book Festival is up in Austin? Laura Bush created it and is held every year on the grounds of the Capitol. They bring Texas authors, they bring Texas books, and the Texas Book Festival also gives out public libraries grants to help you build your collection. So they gave us $2,500 to beef up our collection. When we ran it through the international, oh, can you go back one for you real quick? Yeah, I am the less Institute of Museums and Library Services. They have this wonderful database that you can export your collection, and they'll come back and tell you how you scored with diversity. Well, out of the possible 100%, we scored nine. So we used the $2,500 to buy diversity books. These are not normal subject headings for us, so we added books that dealt with characters of diverse disabilities, socioeconomic standings, diverse authors, and the L-G-T-Q-I-A, I'm sure. On the other side, go back one more, please. On the other side of the screen, this is what we actually purchased. We were able to get 50-picture books, junior nonfiction, graphic novels, junior fiction. We're only playing two Spanish books and 11 young adults. They have all checked out since last October at least once. So we closed it out this last month. We scored high on the diversity, and they really liked those posters that we put out. We call them reedalights. So we started with a book that was really popular, and then around the poster, we put the books, said, "If you liked to read the big picture, or if you've read that one, you may like these other ones that are on the poster." The Texas Book Festival scored us really high on that. We've also, this is not a new grant for us. Since I've been on staff, we've applied in 2015, 2018, 2019, and now in 2022. In 2018, we bought the brief books to support the Southern Springs shootings. Welcome to your library. Any more questions? Oh, these are some, I forgot I added this one. We have some outstanding grants that are still in the process. We were awarded the 2023 Texas Reads Grant, where we're going to put up two more storybooks. This one will be the City of Poth, and we also have the R Card, will be the San Antonio River Authority. And what those are, there's one in LaGuardia and there's one in Stockdale. I love the one in Stockdale. It's around their splash pad. So in the summer, when the kids would go to the splash pad, get wet, get soaked, the parents would make them walk the 16 story frames, and by the time you got done with the end of the story, you were dry and could get back in the car and go home. So we're waiting to hear from the Texas Treasures, which is a scanning grant that we're going to partly partner with Southern Springs Museum, the LaGuardia Museum Association, Wilson County Museum, Stockdale Museum, and the Wilson County Historical Commission. We're looking for those old newspapers from San Antonio. If we can scan them, we can also make them searchable. So you just type in keyword, you can find your search. Any questions about the library?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Looking forward to getting ready for summer.
Yes, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. Item seven, discuss and take action upon the installation of new traffic control devices on Eden Crossing to be located at the T intersection of Bobby Lynn Drive.
Any special words you need to put? I was called to this area in reference to different issues. It serves as a bus stop up on top of the hill where 324 and this drive, or excuse me, from dealing with my allergies and my lungs. Anyways, I was called by the public, and I went out and took a look at this area, and there is a need to be able to help with traffic control in the area. I'd like to go ahead and carry it forward to having a public hearing to where we will be able to notify the public that we're considering putting stop signs at Bobby Lynn Drive and Eden Crossing. Bobby Lynn Drive already has one, this is a T intersection, and dealing with the county attorney, we'd like to take and go ahead and ask for a 30-day notification on the newspaper in reference to putting these control devices up.
Okay, so we need a minimum of 30-day notice?
Correct.
And then we'll have the date of the public hearing?
And then we'll have to have a public hearing, yes.
So what's the first meeting? April, yeah.
April 10?
Yeah, so April 10 to be the first court we can do that. So I'll entertain a motion for the action that's required.
I'm making a motion. Second.
Okay, there's your motion by Commissioner Akin, seconded by Commissioner Perdola to set a public hearing for April 10 to do the proper public notification. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, yeah, I guess we need to specify a time.
10 a.m. is the norm.
We normally do 10, so we'll say 10 a.m.
Now, counting days, we get our 30 days.
We're going to need to be the second.
It's 30 days from today?
Well, but I guess.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it has to go in.
Is it 30 days after the date of the paper? It's going to be 30 days for today.
You have to give seven days' notice that you're going to have the hearing in 30 days. So it has to be seven, the notice must be published not later than the 7th or earlier than the 30th day before the date of the actual hearing.
Okay, so we're giving, we'll be between the 7th and 30th. Because we can put it in next week's paper.
And that would be prior to 30 days.
More than seven and less than 30.
Correct, yes.
All right, then we're good. Okay, item A, A, discuss and take action on eliminating the position of emergency management coordinator in the General Fund Department 1200.0523, and add a new position of administrative assistant to be shared equally by the Roden Bridge precincts. Mr. Dean.
Yes, so Judge Whitman and I discussed this, and she is requesting the court's approval. We currently have a position for emergency management coordinator in our EMA office. He's requesting to eliminate that position and add a position for administrative assistant for Commissioners Court. And so there's no bottom line change to the budget for that to happen in order to do that. So I requested two budget items. The first one would be for your discussion and approval to do that. Basically, once we remove a position from a department, that position is gone forever until you deem it necessary, if later on in the future we deem it necessary, to bring back that position. But at this time, Judge Whitman doesn't believe that it is a needed position, so that's what that letter, item A, is about.
All entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we eliminate the position of emergency management coordinator and add the new position of administrative assistant for the Commissioners.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner King. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none, motion carries.
Okay, and so my item B was just discussion and taking action on approving a budget amendment, and this is going to be to transfer the budgeted salaries that's currently in the EMA department, which is the 0523, and transfer the salaries and all of the benefits to be split equally before the four Roden Bridge precincts. And I cannot give you a dollar amount right now because I have to go back and calculate where we are today, or I guess we need to establish an effective date, if that's going to be today.
It's the 15th of the month.
The 15th of this month? So from March 15 through 9/30, those dollar amounts of salary and all benefits, I have to calculate what that is and then split it between the four precincts. And so I'll add those expenses to each of your salaries and benefit line items.
But you don't know what that amount was when they reversed the management?
I do know the total amount was probably, give or take a little bit, because the salary for that position is 36,000, about 36,000 salary, and then you add another, probably 12,000 plus maybe in benefits, in fringe benefits. So what are, you know, that minus where we are from October 1 until now would get subtracted from that amount.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ford. Any questions?
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve budget amendment and transfer budgetary salary and benefits starting March 15 through September 30 of 2023.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner King and a second by Commissioner Perdola. Is there any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you. Since you are agreed, once I get the budget amendment typed up and I calculate what that is, I'll confine each of you to sign the amendment for my records.
Okay, moving on to item nine, discussion takes action to ratify Operation Most Our Task No. Random to accommodate the addition of agencies to the task force. We'll let the sheriff take this. I have one copy, and we'll pass it down just to bring the other Commissioners up to date. We approved an interlocal agreement, what, about six months ago?
It's probably close to a year.
Or a year ago now, and some additional agencies have been added, so I'll let the sheriff explain and answer any questions if anyone else has.
Yes, sir, as it says, they, the court approved about a year ago, this same resolution with, I think, 20 different agencies in it. The task force has been doing very good statewide. We're very well thought of by the Governor's Office as far as what we've been accomplishing as this task force. Aransas County and Zapata County approached us about two months ago wanting to join the task force, and we've met with them a couple times, and we'd like to have them in there. In order to do that, we need to adjust this resolution so that they'll be part of the MOU and become part of the task force.
Just to repeat, it's the same MOU, it's just adding two counties to it.
Yes, sir.
All entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we take into account the two new counties to this MOU that we already have established.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Akin. Motion by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola to add the two new agencies to the Operation Most Art Task memorandum. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, utility permit number 719, local water supply. Mr. Dean?
I said it was clear.
And I'm actually going to go and yell my next one. Have a utility permit 719, it's a proposal to bore under County Road 235. It's a typical one-inch service line with a two-inch PVC casing at approximately 6,250 feet north of the intersection of 123 and County Road 235.
I'll make a motion to have something going to bore under County Road 235. I've already been out there and reviewed all this.
Second.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdola to approve permit number 719 for local water supply. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. B, Hidden Ranch.
Yes, so this is a variance request from our subdivision regulations. The developers of Hidden Ranch subdivision, they're currently have a platform in Unit 2. And the variance they're requesting is the, the regulation is when two subdivisions are being developed next to each other, the roads of the new development have to tie in to the existing development if there's a road set out. They're requesting a variance from this regulation because County Road 168 has an existing easement that extends through where they're developing and the...
Here, let me help.
Help me out, please.
Yeah, so, she's got that, part of the easement, or the easement for County Road 168 extends into where some of their proposed lots in Unit 2. So we had a discussion with them concerning the fact that they need to tie into County Roads 168. Their preference was to do that in the next phase and not this one?
Yes, in Unit 3. And where you're seeing on the highlight, on the satellite images highlighted, that's a proposed tie-in from Unit 3 into County Road 168, which ties into where it's currently maintained.
Right. And so I've reviewed this, we've met with them and I'm good with it.
I did receive a favorable recommendation from the review committee as well.
So at this time, the only thing we're doing is allowing this variance and they'll complete the plat application process and then we'll approve the plat some day in the future.
Yes, this is a requirement for their current plan, it's under review. And actually, the review committee gave a favorable recommendation contingent on Hidden Ranch, Unit 3, connecting those roads to County Road 168. So that requires them, when they come in Development Unit 3, they're not going to be able to...
Yeah, they won't be able to.
...change that connection.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance for Hidden Ranch. We have a motion by Commissioner Martin, a second by Commissioner King to approve the variance for Hidden Ranch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, item 11 is minutes.
Couldn't hear the...
Well, the question was whether or not I can make the motion acting as Judge Proton. Well, there's no, I can, a judge can make a motion and hand vote, so.
You're still a Commissioner.
So you have minutes before you can just continue anything you want to say?
They have been reviewed by the county judge and the county attorney's office.
Mary, you ready? I'll entertain a motion with minutes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Commissioners Court minutes as presented. Now, there's two different dates in this packet. Are we going to do the 13th and the 27th?
Yeah, we can do both of them.
Okay. Uh, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken, so we're in the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, General Botter, personal table changes.
Good morning. Randy Jewell was hired as a road ham for Precinct 3, making $18 per hour for $37,440.80 annually, effective today, March 13. Catherine Igram has resigned from her position as a dispatcher for the Sheriff's Department effective March 10. Colton Hart has resigned from his position as corrections officer for the Sheriff's Department effective March 10. Annika Harrell has resigned, retired from her position as a telecommunications director for the Sheriff's Department effective March 10, with 27 years of service to Wilson County.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 13, item number 13, Mr. Dean?
I know.
On this 13th, 3rd of March?
Oh, yeah. I have bills for you in the amount of $227,039.97. Nothing out of the ordinary in this staff. Share these ones first, or she can email it?
Yeah, but if, yeah, but you would make a copy if you wanted, since you're emailing it to me.
I know, I thought I told her that, but she may have been, oh, thanks.
I do have one question. How do we handle the frequent, we're starting to get the reimbursement checks on the tax bill, does that just show up in the budget?
It'll go, I have a line item for revenue for each of your, each of your, for that grant, so as the money comes in, it gets that, so it comes off of the expenses that we have approved.
Does it look like we're kind of got all of that working okay?
Yes, Kayla's been phenomenal in, Kayla and Kristin have been really knocking it out. So there was a little mix-up on the weight, I think you guys were involved in that, on the weights and stuff for the dump trucks, but we've got it all fixed.
I think Kristin and I figured out, I spoke with her when they last met, that probably those old trucks were purchased without a dump body on them.
Yeah.
So the title reflected the chassis weight, not with the dump bodies, so that's where that 10,000 or 12,000 pound difference was coming in.
Yeah, well, Dawn worked really quickly in getting that corrected for us and getting the updated registration so that we can submit, that was the last thing.
I know that the ACOG was really picky about that weight difference. And that's the only thing I could come up with, that body is probably 10,000 to 12,000.
And they've been really great with us too, so that was the last thing, so we should start seeing our money rolling in.
Good.
Super happy about that.
We went through the same thing. In both instances, the trucks were truck for truck, you know, dual tandem and single tandem, and what it was, it was the bad weight, they did an unfinished product weight.
Yep. I'll make a motion that we approve the bills that the auditor室presented for cover.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner King to take the county bills. No further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.